One-inch, 713-foot-long corrugated metal pipe utilizing what we have in the past. It's a cured-in-place fiberglass liner rather than a traditional tear-up-the-road-and-replace-the-whole-pipe approach. And this process actually results in an approximate savings of over $15,000 to the county when we do it this way versus tearing it up. We intend to keep the site open to single-lane traffic with a flagging operation while we're working during the activity, and then it will be returned to two-way traffic for the remainder of the 24-hour period and on weekends. We have a quote that was submitted by Pleasant Construction for $72,755. They are currently under term contract with the county, and funding for this work is available and was budgeted for.
Can you replace the sunken culvert? Can you?
It didn't sink. It just, everything around it sank.
Oh, okay. The culvert's still there?
Yes, the culvert's still there, but everything else sank.
How long is this term contract? Is it annual? Is it up for bid every year with Pleasant? I apologize. Pleasant Construction?
Yes.
It's a competitive bid every year?
It is competitive bid, and I would let Mike in purchasing speak to how often his cycle is. But we go along with them, and whenever we're guided to do those, that's when we go back out to bid for specific items.
And this falls within their scope? Nothing out of scope?
No, sir. Nothing out of the scope of the work. This merely, when it gets to the point of using these term contracts, it's the dollar amount that drives us into you for concurrence of our operations out there.
Maureen, can you answer that question?
Yes.
You want to?
She canvases.
I mean, while you're here, let's just get that out there and answer his question, and then we're good.
Most term contracts are for a five-year period, and then we will rebid them after the five years is out. But that particular contract, I would have to look to see what renewal it's in. But yes, we go out to bid. We put them out for five years. They are looked at annually to make sure that everything's going okay with them. There's no problems or issues. We renew them for another year, and then, like I said, at the end of that five-year period, then they are rebid.
Okay, now, I appreciate it. I imagine Pleasant Construction's in good standing. This work is within their scope, and you're having it done. Okay, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to utilize their term contract with Pleasant Construction Incorporated for the Belmont Circle Culvert Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
By the way, where's Belmont Circle?
It's down in the Woodbine area.
Oh, okay.
It's down, like, Cabin Springs, down in that.
Yeah, okay.
Down in that area.
All right, cool. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is paving for Nicodemus, right?
Yes. Yes, sir. So, this is a term-use contract for paving. We evaluated Nicodemus Road for surface treatment, and a 1.2-mile section, Bowersox Road to 27, we found to be in need of additional work other than what a normal surface treatment or normal maintenance procedure would address. So, from Bowersox Road to Stoller Road, three-quarters of a mile, that's going to be a full-depth reclamation, where we actually will grind that up, regrade it, and pave it. And then Stoller Road to Route 27, almost a half a mile, will get only an asphalt overlay, because that's the shape that it, that is in, which will be a two-inch asphalt overlay. The total length of the two-lane roadway to be addressed is 1.2 miles, and the adjoining sections of that road will be treated as well. So, when we're done, Nicodemus Road will be a finished product from end to end. Paving work will be performed utilizing lane closures. We'll have signage and flagmen. We're looking at 15 working days, and of course, that's if the weather cooperates with us, and we hope it does. Cost for this project, $205,000, and this is to CJ Miller. Again, they have a contract with the county competitively bid and awarded, and funding is also available for this work.
So, this is actually, this is actual blacktop, right?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, this isn't the...
Not the microseal now. Chip seal now.
Now, is this, is this a reaction because of the deterioration of the road, or is it being proactive for long-term use?
So, in this particular case, when they looked at the whole Nicodemus Road, some of it will take our normal maintenance treatment, which may be a chip seal or something else because it hasn't degraded. Sometimes we find, depending upon what the base was underneath the asphalt, it's gotten worse. So, you could chip seal it all day long. You could treat the top. Problem is, it's still going to sink. You're still going to have ruts. It's still going to break apart. We don't waste money on that, so at that point in time, we come back, we reevaluate, and the worst section is that one that's got to be milled. So, that means it's all the way down through the base. We're going to mill that up, put some chemical additives in, repack the base, and then put a total of about five inches of asphalt on top. So, it'll get about three inches of a base coat and then about two inches of a top coat, right around that area.
I will move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to utilize the term contract with CJ Miller, Inc. for the Nicodemus Road paving project.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous as well. Paving asphalt. Now, we're getting somewhere.
Paving materials, Commissioners. So, we do paving on our own. We're very thankful for that. We have a crew that gets out there and does our work, and this is some of that work. So, we're coming to you today to get approval to purchase the material that we would like to use on a section of East Sawmill Road. That's about three-quarters of a mile. And then we have Jason Town Road, Old Camp Station Road, and Winters Church Road. Now, those three roads are currently gravel pieces that are in between other asphalt sections. So, in other words, Old Camp Station will have asphalt on the right, asphalt on the left, and we have a small piece in the middle that is still gravel. What this allows us to do with that road, now that it's black all the way, it really saves us all time, money, and maintenance, because at that point, for example, when it's snowed lately, we have to plow in or salt where it's asphalt. We then have to stop. We have to change our treatment method right around the gravel road portion, and then, again, change it once we get back onto the other side that's asphalt. So, this is going to allow us to make those three roads now completely black, and there'll be less portions of gravel within the county. This paving work, again, will be performed using lane closures with signage and flags. Estimated time is 20 working days, weather permitting. And again, this is for material, purchasing it from CJ Miller at the cost of $395,000, under term contract, and this will allow us to do all those sites that are mentioned in this concurrence.
So, we're buying material, but our workers are going to do the paving themselves and whatever else is required?
Yes, sir. We have our own paving machine, rollers, and our crews actually go out, lay the asphalt, and do the work.
Do you have a priority of roads that you're doing this within the county? Do you have a priority of the roads that you're doing this within the county?
So, there are two different ones. So, within the Bureau of Roads' operations, we're charged mainly to utilize the operating budget, and through the operating budget, we provide generally the maintenance and upkeep of all the roads in the county. So, staff goes out and they look at them, and they try to keep them on about an every-seven-year maintenance cycle to where we're doing something on that road, either putting down a sealant, sealing cracks, in order to maintain it for longevity. The Bureau of Engineering, on the other hand, what they're looking at are more your capital projects. They also develop a priority list, and they keep that. And then each year, based on your guidance and appropriations, which you have done, they go out and will do so many either milling fills, asphalt overlays, or complete replacements, and some of those will be coming up to you as well. With regard to our gravel roads, those roads, we are taking, and to the degree that we can, we close the roads. So, we actually had this discussion with a customer earlier this week who lives on one of those roads, that we're taking them literally from the shortest stretch to the longest stretch. And when we can get in and close two ends of a blacktop road and make it together, they are on our priority list. And then, again, the rest come as funding is available. But that's, that's where we're at with those roads right now.
Two miles less than gravel.
And it, and man, it makes my life easier. All right, I'll make the motion we authorize DPW to utilize the term contract with CJ Miller for four surfacing projects, which total 2.34, East Sawmill, Jason Town, Old Camp Station, and Winters Church.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good job, and thank you.
By the way, Jim, doesn't, I mean, we thank you all the time, but I don't think we do it enough. You know, we can do it every, every day. Hopefully, we've turned the corner now. We were just talking about that before we went on the air. Sun's high in the sky now. Pavement temperatures are, are on the rise, and I would hope that even if we do get some precept, that we've, we've crossed that...
Threshold?
Yeah, let's hope.
I'm smiling.
We want to thank you and all of your folks, again, for the amount of hard work that you all do while everybody else is sleeping, so...
But we appreciate any words of...
And thank you for all the communications you put out. That was really nice.
Yeah, it's all good.
Really on top of things. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. 2019 Pipe Culvert Repairs is next?
No.
No?
No.
Yes?
Yes, that's what I have.
That's what I have?
Yeah.
Which means Deb Butler, where's Deb? Anybody seen Deb? Deb out there, Doug, or not? Jeff?
No, there was a lot in between.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, how about the traffic barrier improvements? Is that her, too? What? No, not according to my schedule, unless we're messed up.
Pipe Culvert.
Traffic barriers.
We got culvert repairs and traffic barriers. If you want to wait on Deb, we can scoot to the...
I'm here for it.
We can go, we can move to the self-help if you want. If you want to wait on Deb, which, does that...
We're good whenever you want. Yeah, you might as well move to that.
All right.
Self-help projects.
Yeah, let's, Jeff, Jeff, come on up, and we'll self-help.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, for the, for the thousands of viewers, we're skipping ahead to self-help projects, Department of Rec and Parks, with our director, Jeff Daggett.
Thank you. First, a quick briefing as to what is a self-help project, because I know we have viewers at home wondering about that, and we've got a couple folks up here. It's the first time going through this as well. This is an item within our capital budget each year. It's usually a little over $80,000 per year in county funds. Our Recreation and Parks Advisory Board listens to project requests from our rec councils twice a year. They do it in September. If there's any money left, they do it again in February. These projects are like many capital projects. They're a mixture of county funds and rec council funds. Usually, it's about a three-to-one match. Sometimes, when the money gets tight, the percentages change. If they have a lot of volunteer hours involved, the percentage may change a little bit as well. Recently, in February, we had about $45,000 requested in county funds. We had a little over $18,000 available, so very competitive process. The advisory board ultimately approved four projects, which I'll present to you today. And then what we ask for is a request to transfer funds from community self-help into these individual projects. North Carroll Rec Council requested funding for infield mix at Hampstead Elementary, North Carroll High School, and Hampstead Municipal Park. County funds would be $3,665. Rec council support, $3,087. Tawnytown Athletic Association requested infield mix for Tawnytown High School Park. $3,008 in county funds, $2,592 rec council support. Westminster Area Rec Council requested funding for infield mix at J.C.'s Park. $2,918 in county funds, $3,082 in rec council support. And the last one was Winfield Rec Council requested funding for wrestling mats for Warriors Wrestling. $9,298 in county funds, $3,067 in rec council funds. Funding, county funds requested for these projects is available within the existing budget. Happy to answer any questions that any of you may have on the projects.
I'm good with everything but the wrestling mats.
That's hurtful.
Why?
You've got three wrestlers on your side.
We're sitting in the wrong place.
You obviously don't know your audience.
You're meaning to pin in your dad.
How often do the rec councils come to you using this? Is it like a semi-annual? Is it annual, or is it as needed?
We have funding each year. We encourage the councils to come in September, because that's when the largest amount of money is available. There have been years where there was no money left to even entertain requests in February. This year, we had some money left, but obviously not enough to address all of the concerns. And many of these requests, probably the most common one, is either for fencing improvements at ball fields or ball mix. So, a lot of them try to get it in to get their fields ready for the spring.
No dog parks?
No, sir.
Okay. Just asking.
All right, any other questions?
With that, I'm going to move the County Board of Commissioners to approve the transfer of $18,889 from community self-help to four self-help project accounts to be established by the Department of Management and Budget.
Second.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And while you're still there, might as well just do this one, and then we'll go back.
Okay.
So, this is the tennis and basketball revitalization at Charles Carroll Park. Jeff? And Maureen?
Yes, we did solicit bids for contractors to provide all the labor, equipment, and materials to provide asphalt paving for the tennis and basketball courts at Charles Carroll Park. We received six bids, and we are asking your concurrence to award it to the American Asphalt Paving Company for $88,730.
How many tennis and basketball courts are we talking about?
There's one basketball court there, and there's two tennis courts.
Does this include the lining and all this?
This includes the lining. It also includes replacing the fencing around those areas.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I take that back. That fencing was done in a previous bid when we bid the backstops and the ball field fencing.
Okay.
We included the fencing there. By pulling it out, we actually got better prices.
Okay.
I think that, along with the timing, the time of year for the bid. We had bid this once before, did not have enough money to move forward. This time, we got a much better bid.
Okay, so the fence is in decent shape up there, I guess?
Well, the fence has been peeled back to allow access for the paving, and then the fencing company will come in when the paving's done and finish the fencing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Have we used this top company before, the American Asphalt?
I believe we have. I think everybody on this list has been a vendor that we've had positive experiences with previously.
So, when these guys put these things down, what's the, do they give you a life expectancy or any type of, you know, on these? What's the...
We've had courts, you know, you're probably looking 15, 20 years.
Yeah, okay.
So, we should be good for a while.
Okay.
I don't even want to think about the last time those courts were resurfaced. I mean, you know the condition of them. They've been a community garden for the last five years, I think.
I think Abe Lincoln played handball there.
He gonna shoot?
Yeah. He beat me to the punch.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll take that one. I deserve that with the wrestling thing.
Keep going, keep going.
Okay. You going to put a pickleball court on those?
Yes, we are.
Good, all right. All right, I'm going to make the motion we award the contract for tennis and basketball revitalization at Charles Carroll Park to American Asphalt in the amount of $88,730.
Second.
Anything else on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Thank you.
And as I mentioned the other day, this does complete the outdoor improvements up at the Charles Carroll site for the athletic field, so this was the last piece of it. Very happy to get that in place.
Yeah, so are a lot of folks, Jeff, so we appreciate your due diligence in trying to find that right number, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, Deb. We're back to 2019 Pipe Culvert Repairs and Replacement.
Which item is that on here?
Debbie Butler. That's item number 10.
Thank you. Did you have a server infrastructure upgrade on your agenda, bid approval? For IT? Does that, I do Mark Ripper's here with another bid approval, and I think that was supposed to be before...
No.
Now, is that not on there?
Uh, wait a minute. Yeah, it's after.
You got it later. I must be working off an old copy of the...
Yeah, it's after, it was supposed to be after Jeff Daggett, so we do have it.
Okay.
And so, we'll get to him after...
So, what we can do now, the pipe culvert repairs?
Yeah, we're going to pipe culvert.
All right. So, we are here to request your approval to award the contract for the 2019 Pipe Culvert Repairs and Replacements to Stan Balls in the amount of $399,461. Our county went out to bid. We got four bids, and Stan Balls was the lowest bidder.
To provide just a little bit of background on this particular project is, there are 15 roads total in this particular contract. They're all roads that will be paved this summer. There are 30 sites total where we're making repairs or replacing, adding concrete headwalls, that type of thing.
Okay.
So, we're getting all the pipe work done prior to paving.
Okay.
It's a good way to do it.
Can we get a list of those roads and where things are going to be done?
I can tell you now, or if you want to...
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to share with our respective communities that these are things that are happening, you know, and we're working to improve them.
Sure, I'll tell them to you now, and then I can leave a, get a copy. It's Leisure Lineboro Road, Band Hall Hill, Ballinger, Bartholo, Ballinger Mill, Rodbeck, Grave Run, Lepo, a portion of Mayberry, Middleburg, Miller Station, a portion of Newspound, Old Westminster Pike, Schaefer Mill, Wilda, and Y Road.
No, it's District 1 and 2, most of them, so...
That's what it sounds like. That's great.
Yeah.
But again, providing that to us so we can get and share out would be great.
And are the precast headwalls they put in for most of these?
No, the ones we call for are cast in place. Usually, it's, they're unique situations that precast doesn't always work.
All right, any other questions?
You used Stanbow before?
Yes.
Yet they don't want to work.
Okay.
Well, since the contractors in that district, I will move that the Board of County Commissioners award a contract for the 2019 Pipe Culvert Repair Replacements to Stan Balls, Inc. in the amount of $399,461.
No, second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Bid approval for 2018, it says. Is that right, Deb?
That's correct.
2018 Traffic Barrier Improvements.
Yep, we'd like to recommend award for the 2018 Traffic Barrier Improvements to LS Lee in the amount of $340,665. Again, this, we put out the bid. We got two bidders, and LS Lee was the lowest bidder.
Okay.
2018 because we're finalizing the work we did last year. Usually, traffic barrier is the last portion of work that we do. So, we've just been separating it out as a separate contract, because typically, these two vendors are the ones, there's another one or two. But the general just has to, like, subcontract with them, so we just decided to bid it out individually.
And LS Lee does have a Carroll County site, even though they're based out of York. They do have property here in Carroll County.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Just hit the roads again. Deb, is where we're doing these?
I actually do have them on the briefing paper. Do them on all of them. Bixler's Church Road, Cherry Town Deer Park, Gillis Road, Camp Station Road, and Oklahoma. And we were not sure of how the bids were going to come in, because it's a federal highway, has some new, they've had them for a while, and everyone's phasing it in. New requirements on connections and where the laps of the rail take place. So, we weren't sure of how those costs were going to come in by updating to these new standards, which we actually ended up getting a very good price. So, what we had done was not include all of the roads, thinking that we wouldn't have enough funding. But we probably do have some for a few additional roads that we deferred.
So, we may come back to you for change orders or something, or do some additional work if everything stays within budget?
Good, okay. All right. I'll make the motion that we award the contract for the 2018 Traffic Barrier Improvements to LS Lee in the amount of $340,665. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, request for authorization to move fiber and a budget transfer for that. And now, you're up, Mark.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. You'll see how confused I am. We have run about 120 miles of fiber around the county. Most of it is along state highways. In order to put it on state highways, we had to get permits from them to allow us to put it in that location. As part of that agreement, when that fiber was put in, State Highway has us move the fiber if they ever need to for any future road projects. And this is the first time that we've had one of this size that we've had to come before you with. I want you to know that we do take and work with State Highway for several months before we actually get to the point that we know we have to move the fiber. We look at different options. We work with their staff out on the roads to see if there are possible alternatives. If this were being done because a private company was building a building, for example, when they put in the new sheets up in Tawnytown at that corner there, the private company is the one that's responsible paying for it, because this is an actual state highway responsibility becomes ours. On May 13th is the targeted begin date. They are planning on widening Maryland Route 32 from Macbeth Way all the way down to Main Street. So, and I've got the distances on there. It's about 4,700 feet of conduit, 5,350 feet of fiber. So, what we're coming before the board for is the cost for us to do this is going to be $106,250, is to ask for your approval to, for that amount. And then I also need an approval to move the money from the Transportation State Projects to a Maryland 32 widening account.
Is this county money or is this state money?
This is county money.
The state does not have the responsibility to move the fiber?
No, for anybody who puts utilities in along state highways, it is the responsibility of the people who put in the utility. Whether it's us, the telephone company, Verizon, Comcast, it's all the responsibility to do that. It's not states. Even when they did those projects in, in the towns with the streetscape projects, there were places there that we had to move fiber as well because of those projects.
Why is there 650 feet more fiber than there's a conduit?
Pardon me?
Why is there 650 feet more fiber than there's a conduit?
Oh, good question, Commissioner. The reason for that is, is we would put in, call in slack. And what that allows to do is, if any point in the future, we had to allocate more fiber to a specific thing, or we get a fiber cut somewhere along that path, we have the fiber that we're able to then just pull it back and put it in place, rather than having to run a whole new strand through. So, and that's what the handholds are for, that you see every, so often along the way. There's actually slack loops that slid in, sit in there.
Interesting. I thought that was good.
Is there a vendor that you're, how'd you get, come up with $106,000?
We came before the board the beginning, or actually, in the fall of last year. We have a contractor by the name of Skyline Network Engineering, LLC. They are the company who does all of our fiber work. It was a bid contract. They were the only ones who bid on the contract for the second time in a row, and in their contract, they have all the pricing that we have. So, this 106.5 comes from the contract price.
So, are we, you're asking actually for us then to approve the execution of this money to this contract?
Yes, Commissioner. And then to actually do the budget transfer from Transportation State Projects to the Maryland 32 widening. So, it's two motions that I need.
We've had discussions before about who's responsible for what.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the motion. Should we address the name of the company?
Well, I mean, I don't know that you have to, but it doesn't, you know...
Okay, okay.
Since they're the contractor, I guess, you know...
Yes, Commissioner. And actually, they're the contractor for about 32 jurisdictions in the state of Maryland.
But...
Okay.
My point is, we discussed about who's responsible for what before, and, you know, I've been a little bit...
It's a hard pill to swallow.
Yeah, I've been a little bit surprised when, uh, but yet it's part of, it's part of the, uh, you know, improving our infrastructure there, so, um, you know, I get it.
Hey, Commissioners, just as another example, let you know, we really do work well with the, the state of Maryland. Um, several years ago, they wanted to move the guardrail out on One Forty from Ninety-seven and, um, One Forty all the way down to Figsburg, and when they initially started that project, it looked like it was gonna cost us a million dollars to have our fiber moved, we worked with them, and they actually moved the guardrail for us so that we didn't have to touch it. So, you know, sometimes it works out that we don't have to move it in this particular case. It was mainly because of wetlands and those things in the area, we weren't able to, um, do anything else at this point, we have to...
Okay.
So, I'll make the motion that we authorize moving the fiber along Maryland Route Thirty-two from Macbeth Way to Main Street in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All right, any, anything else on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Now... What, what, you're gonna have to refresh my memory on what this eighty-six twenty-nine is, this Transportation State Project, uh, line item that we're getting this out of. Was this the one we put into place to assist with road projects or not?
I believe so. Is that correct? Is it go? It's the, to assist with state projects?
Yes.
Do we know what the balances of monies there are in that? You're gonna have to come to the mic. You're gonna, you're gonna have to come, come to the mic for the, yeah, sorry.
Yes, uh, this project currently has seven hundred seventy-one thousand dollars sitting, available.
Okay. And after taking this, that, that's before we take this out, right?
Yes, before we...
Okay, okay. All right, I wanted to know where these were there.
Yeah, as long as we're not projecting more projects using that pot of money.
We didn't, we didn't really say what we were gonna use that money for. We just sort of put it in there for whatever occurred, and I guess this is one of those whatever occurred type deals, so, uh, so, okay.
Commissioners, I can tell you from a fiber standpoint, because we monitored this stuff years out with State Highway, that we have no other known projects at this particular point in time that we're gonna have to move fiber for in the next year or two.
But I think this makes sense for the, for my two, other two colleagues that were in this last year. Was it last year's budget or the year before's?
Yeah, I think it was, first time we did it.
Yeah.
You put this in there?
Yeah, and it, it made sense be, you know, and it, 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 we thought it would help in the event of, of attempting to try to get some of these either, projects either pushed forward or to assist in some of the minor things that would occur.
Well, and you used, you did the same kind of thing at Gillis, um, you paid for movement of utilities and this, so a similar kind of thing.
Smart.
So that's just, just wanted to make sure, so I know what that, that item is on the budget, so... Okay. Okay, so with that being said...
I move the County Commissioners to approve a budget transfer, one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from Transportation State Projects, eighty-six twenty-nine, to Maryland Thirty-two Widening. Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ripper.
Okay. All right, now, number, item fifteen on today's agenda is server infrastructure upgrade. Where are you going, Mark?
I'm gonna sit here, I have...
Oh, okay.
...stack coming up to handle this.
He is people.
He's got people.
He's got people.
Your chief of tech, Jacob Gregory. You're, you're the people, Jacob.
Oh, thank you. Always wanted to be part of it.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
So we are requesting award of a contract to a CDW government in the amount of four hundred one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents for the upgrading of the county's IT infrastructure.
Okay, so, tell us what upgrade of county's IT structure means.
Well, taking a look at the IT infrastructure, the life cycle of it, the simplest version I could think of is the laptop computer or the desktop computer you use, it's replaced on a schedule. The servers that provide service to the entire county have a life cycle also, and our servers, this system, uh, the infrastructure for our servers is, uh, it's time to replace them and upgrade them. Some of them, the, their support is going to be ending this calendar year, uh, so there's many things pushing us to do it. It's the life cycle for, by the vendor, it's also the capabilities. Over time, as we upgrade software even, it puts a greater demand upon the hardware. So that's another reason why periodically, it's not just because the equipment gets old, it simply is no longer capable of providing the computing power or storage needed to serve everything. And that's where we are.
Do we have, um, I mean, a few, a few questions about this. I take it this is in line with the vision of where we wanna go with our IT infrastructure in the county and county government. So with that said, I would imagine there's a breakdown of exactly what software, hardware, and services that this money will provide. And then how competitive has it been as far as going out to bid, because you just have the one vendor here?
We looked at actually three different technologies, and it turns out this one served our, our needs the best, and it was the lowest cost solution. And talking about looking out, one critical thing that I made essential of all discussions with vendors is we need a system that is, uh, expandable. So that down the road, two years, if for some unforeseen reason our needs increase significantly, we can expand a system without having to totally replace it. So we are looking at the future, uh, it's a part of all our discussions, and it so happens that this buy was also the best one, and it met our needs.
It was bid, just not by the county, it was bid by National Cooperative of Purchasing, so it's the lowest price that we were gonna get, we're not gonna get a better price by going out, as Carroll County, this is the lowest price, it's just, Cisco's gonna allow anybody to bid.
That I'm looking at, it's more the work that is necessarily gonna be done, the software, the hardware and the services is in line with all of our needs and, you know, nested with what we wanna do in, in the county, in county government. And this right here, what you're sharing, I expect it is, but it's not laid out here. So it'd be good to see how the work that's gonna be done is going to be in line with the things we wanna accomplish, so...
Mark?
May I, Commissioner?
Yep.
Um, we do, Commissioner, we actually have, um, just like the Budget Office, we actually have a seven-year plan out for IT replacements and equipment, and as part of that plan, we look at when we're going to replace each piece, um, and whether or not the technology will need to be reviewed at the time that is done. This does fit in with our plan, um, and this has actually been planned, like, four or five years ago that we were going to do this. So this is not something that's just come up, and it is budgeted completely in our budget.
Is the expectation that next year will be another four hundred thousand for more, or is this in seven years, there'll be expectation?
This is in a five, I would actually say a five to seven-year process that we will probably be back for more. Will we be back for other things in next year? Yes, we will, because we don't replace everything at one time, so at different times, we'll be up for, um, different components of the network.
Okay. Can I answer your questions?
Well, I just don't feel like I'm prepared to approve a half a million dollars for an upgrade that I don't know what the upgrade is actually gonna do. You know, and I think seeing it, kinda, kinda like what we talked about the roads, you know, seeing the roads that are gonna be improved.
Sure.
You know, this is a lot of work, and I'm, I'm not doubting you at all.
Right.
But for me to be clear on what this is actually going to do, is it in line?
Sure, well, I can have Keith Martin from our department come up and talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
We're calling all in today.
That's why we brought it all in.
Smart. This particular set of systems runs our primary, uh, servers for pretty much every agency in the county, has some services that are supported by this system. It's a virtual, uh, server environment, so there's a collection of hardware, but basically all on top of that is run. Um, in this particular environment, we're running over seventy individual, uh, server workloads for various applications, like our email services are running on this, file storage is running on this, uh, the land, uh, management applications are running in this environment, and those are all, those applications, and many more, are undergoing upgrades in the near future, and those are continuing to increase the needs of this system, and that's part of the reason we're replacing it. We're also replacing it because it is coming end of life, hardware's not gonna be supported by the manufacturer, and this is critical infrastructure, if this stuff stops working, everybody in the county will know it.
These are the phased upgrades?
Uh, this is basically, uh, first phase, this all is gonna get replaced as one environment here, and then we have another set of environments being New Windsor, which is running another set of workloads down there, and also, uh, acts as a, this continuity site, but we have our server workloads split between two data centers.
The one in New Windsor, one's that can be upgraded, and one's the expectation?
Next fiscal year. It's all, that hardware is also going end of life.
Because you think it's gonna be about the same cost?
Probably.
Wow.
Maybe not quite as much, a little bit smaller environment, but...
Okay.
But in essence, we're running over a hundred and twenty-five servers on this hardware, and if we had to have each of those individually maintained and replaced, we probably would've had to expand the data center downstairs, certainly would've had to have the electricity feed upgrade, had cooling system upgrades. So by collapsing this onto a smaller, you know, but, but much more, you know, expensive platform for what it seems like that it's doing, you know, it's not just one application, it basically time shares all of its resources and lets us take advantage of all the actual power that's in it, as opposed to having to overbuy a hundred individual boxes that might need to be sized to spec whatever their individual peak load is. The software that's part of this system also allows us to basically make full utilization of all the processors and memory that's in that system.
Okay. I guess last, we, we have not had any catastrophic failures, right, with these, with those two locations to date? Is that correct?
We have had failures, but because of some redundancies in it, you probably haven't noticed it.
Right.
And that's part of what the system also does, is it builds in some redundancies, so a node can go down, and end users won't see that it happens, and we'll be fixing it in the background and bringing it back up, and that's what the system also allows to happen, so...
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to point out just one thing here, is that Keith was also, he's a critical part of our, our, he's our senior networking person. In two thousand and fourteen is when these, this particular infrastructure was last upgraded. He was a part of that, he is an expert in this area, so as far as the technology chosen, as far as the cost, uh, we have devoted a significant amount of effort, I assure you, and it, just about any, any detailed question you can come up with, I think we've addressed it at some time internally.
You're confident with your team?
Yes, I am, sir.
You should be.
Okay, any other questions? I wanna make the motion, Ed.
Sure, I'll move that we award the contract for the server infrastructure upgrade to CDW Government, Burn Hill's, someplace, where is that, Burn Hill's, Illinois, in the amount of four hundred and one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much.
Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Position Review Committee Recommendations for the upcoming budget. And, Mike stays where he's at, Doug comes back up, and Ms. Frog, our Director of Human Resources, joins the group.
Joins the panel.
It's like they're playing musical chairs.
They are.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. What we're here to talk to you about today is the Personnel Committee. The role of this committee is to assess agency position requests that are coming in for the budget with an organization-wide perspective, and then to offer recommendations to the board for consideration as you begin your budget process. Our committee spent time talking about how to best approach reaching our recommendations. It quickly became clear, as it has in other years, that scoring systems aren't necessarily the way to go because you're trying to weigh very, very diverse, varied positions, um, against one another, involving widely varying services. So each of the requesting agencies came to the committee to present the positions that they were requesting in the budget. They shared their thinking about it, what the need was, answered questions from the committee. After each session, the committee got together and discussed everything that we talked about, any other concerns we had, or questions that we had for the directors. After all the agencies had appeared, our committee spent additional time discussing the positions requested. Included in our discussions were our concerns about meeting legal and regulatory, regulatory requirements, concerns about potential liability, and the agency's ability to meet their expected service levels, and the urgency of those services. Well, this isn't an exhaustive list, we discussed many other things, um, as we came to our conclusions that Doug and Mike are going to share with you. So after much thought and debate, um, we saw some of these positions as generally less compelling, not that they're not necessary, um, there were good arguments for them, just the arguments weren't as strong as for the other positions. All of this is done with the understanding that is, in years past, there isn't enough funding, funding to identify all these positions in the budget, to fund them all. In the end, the approved positions are your decision, and will be driven by what, what are your priorities. Um, we just tried to gather some information for you to pass along as part of your process. Through that, I'll turn it over to Doug and Mike.
Yeah, I would just add to what Kim said, she said it very well, but it's hard to quantify something that's kinda subjective, like new positions. Um, it's hard to say one position's more important than another position, because really what's important is what's important to you, to meet your goals and objectives. Nobody elected me to meet my goals and objectives, they elected you. So everything you do needs to be around providing the services you promised you'd provide. So having said that, we don't wanna say any positions are more important than other positions, but what we kinda did was looked at them and, uh, looked at which ones, where do we feel the county was most at risk, financially, legally, maybe as far as performing services? So we, kinda, some positions rose to the top as maybe filling those gaps, in our opinion, the best. Um, other times, we looked at positions that maybe crossed over several county agencies, which ones provided the best value, this position's gonna serve the most people, the most citizens, the most county agencies. So we're not trying to say these are the most important positions the county has, but these are just the ones that jumped out at us as ones that we think are gonna create the best value and fill the most needs that we see the county having.
So Commissioners, what, uh, the, the outcome, and you should have before you in both a spreadsheet as well as a brief synopsis of those identified as the high priority positions. They are, I will tell you, merely listed in alphabetical order, uh, but certainly, just, uh, my intent, unless you ask otherwise, is to go down through those positions in the high priority area, and, uh, certainly can answer any questions that you have of, of the way we derive that. So, uh, of the four, um, four, uh, specific position titles, the first one listed is an Employment Compliance Coordinator. This was requested by the Department of Human Resources, and this would be responsible to support the development and implementation and monitoring of effective programs, policies, and practices to ensure that HR functions and processes are compliant with federal, state, and local regulatory requirements. It would be responsible to identify any potential exposure HR and the county would face as far as overseeing any policy, standards, or controls. Uh, the next one on the list is the Resource Management Technician from, uh, the Department of Land and Resource Management. The Resource Management Technician, uh, is responsible for coordinating efforts relating to stormwater management, retrofit program, including all aspects related to the county building process, submitting and maintaining necessary permit apps, and working with State Highway Administration on jointly funded projects. This position also will work closely with our municipalities, uh, related to their restoration efforts, and in conjunction with our NPDES permit, which I know you all are well aware of, and, and those things that we deal with there. Next one on the list is Emergency Communication Specialists. Now you will note in your position title column, um, there were four of those requested. Now you will note in your position title column, there were four of those requested. We did not specify any quantity. Again, ours looks more at the position itself. This was requested by the Department of Public Safety, and it is Emergency Communications Specialist that answers 911 calls. And dispatch is appropriate assistance utilizing our computer-aided dispatch system in the county, as well as any manual dispatch procedures in accordance with our 911 center policies and procedures, and this would support fire, police, or both at the same time. And then our last position that was listed in the high priority area was the Network Client Analyst from the Department of Technology Services, and this position would be responsible for administration and maintenance of our existing network servers, which include daily oversight of identifying and addressing server or other issues related to those. Now those were the four, after again, as Director Frock and Mike have spoke, that, that the group which was listed before you in the brief came up with as the highest priorities. Again, knowing that the decisions you have to make purely are limited on those funds and purely yours, we just wanted to provide you with that information, and are certainly here to answer any questions you may have of us.
So you want bigger government? Don't answer.
So you've, you've done your, a pretty good job of explaining why you're here. Was it, what was it, two years ago, Dick, Dennis, that we asked to have this put together? Because we only had a limited amount of funds to add, to add people?
Yes, sir.
And we weren't really sure how we were going to do that. So we, you all put this group together, and have been since providing us the information we need prior to the budget?
Yes, sir.
If indeed we do have money available to add people?
Right.
So that's sort of the background.
No, it's a great idea.
Is this all the positions that were requested?
They were all the positions that came before the Position Review Committee. So all the directors were provided guidance to present, as we say in the brief, I can't tell you that one won't come up from somewhere else, because I don't know that for a fact.
Right.
These were all that were presented to us.
So this is everything that was presented?
Yes, sir.
Great job eventing and putting them together, I tell you. I know it took a lot to do the matrix and come up with the priority.
The one thing though, Mike, you said subjective, and it is, but it becomes more or less subjective, more objective, the more you understand our vision and the county's approach and our objectives. And you're doing that with this. I mean, I believe you are, so I, I, I don't believe it's just opinions that are out there, that these are more important than others. It's you being in line with what, where we're going from the county. And, I mean, I like the process that you did, and I was going to ask, how long has it been in place? Because it's smart, you can't, can't do it all up here.
I think it's been through, President.
It was revived a couple of years ago, yes.
Okay. Good job.
The last board was on its toes.
That board was on. Well, well.
Go scoot over there.
All right, any questions on, obviously, we're going to take this to the next, you know, the next degree of discussion?
You'll probably have a little bit of that.
You'll have a little bit more discussion.
When you, when you put these in your ranking order, were you also looking at, and you might have said it already, so I apologize, you've already said it, I guess how much work is being done by, say, a different, a department right now, and they need the help just because they have so much work coming into them?
Absolutely. So, and, and you will probably hear, you know, the one thing that our committee doesn't do, and because ultimately everyone knows that you need to hear those decisions, and you may hear from directors that say we're doing this, this, and this, but we certainly did. For example, when you look at the Land and Resource Management position, we hear how difficult it is for them to comply with the NPDES program. And so we know for a fact of the issues that the county has dealt with in the past with regard to those types of permits, and we're leaning forward trying to say that we don't want you, you know, we want to give you that information. So those are the types of things that we looked at, and even the positions that did not make the highest priority, they certainly have workload issues too, but we prioritize these based on those other critical factors that were stated earlier.
Yeah, not an easy job, so I applaud you too. It's part of that HR thing. You know HR, you know what I'm saying, Doug?
She gets it all. Yes, sir. I agree.
All right. Any other questions specifically on these four? And again, when we get to that point, and we have additional, we'll certainly be able to pull you guys in if we need to, to maybe explain a little bit further if we have to.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you for your trust in us, and on behalf of the committee, we sincerely appreciate it.
I appreciate the work, and this is a valuable tool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just let you know, be safe being arrested, I'm not in charge, be careful.
Okay. Hey, hey, Mark?
Yes, Commissioner?
I need to see you before the end of the day, so keep an eye on us and...
Sure, as soon as you come out.
Roll up. I was going to say another word with an S, but I can't, so roll up when you get a chance, please, thank you.
It's on word restriction.
I'm on word restriction, so, okay. Which probably is a good thing for me. Last on today's agenda, we need to clean up some of the activity that we've been doing with boards and commissions, so...
So a couple weeks ago...
Simmer down, so that's last, no, go ahead.
So now that all my coughing jags are over, I do apologize. This was, this, this is hard to get, this crud is hard to get going. But anyway, so a couple weeks ago, we did, appointed folks, boards and commissions, and there was some interest in reviewing some of them to talk about whether or not they really was, had, had continued to have value, and whether there was a continued interest in keeping some, and also possibly finding out a little bit more about another one, and also changing or modifying a fourth one. So the first, the board had some interest in possibly looking at the Utilities Advisory Commission and the Solid Waste Advisory Council. Those boards have been around for a while, they've been, the Utilities Advisory Commission doesn't have very, rarely meets, and, and we have, we struggle mightily to get people to serve on the board, and, and so, you know, the value it provides is, is, is maybe negligible?
Yeah.
And so I don't know if you guys want to talk about that amongst yourselves, or whether you want to continue to move forward with having that, and trying to continue to get folks for it, or whether you want to...
Right.
Ask, tell those folks thanks and move on.
Okay. So for, well, for the record, we did discuss this, and we did, and I want to be careful when we say we struggle to find folks to serve on boards, because we don't typically, but on this one, we do, because the, the areas that we're asking for representation from are, are very, very small. For instance, the Pleasant Valley area, the Bark Hill area, help me out, Jeff.
It's a Freedons left out. We used to have...
Come on, come on, come on up to the, to this microphone. So Bark Hill, Pleasant Valley, and...
Bark Hill, Pleasant Valley, we usually have, we requested a representative from the Freedom area, and a representative at one time from Bramble Hills, which was across the street from TB&amp;H off of 27. There was about maybe less than a dozen homes that at one time was under the county system, and we were able to turn that over to the City of Westminster as they're redoing their water systems, because they wanted our wells.
So that one's gone?
Right.
So essentially...
And we never had a representative there in the first place.
Right. So essentially, we've got a, a board and commission of three?
Right.
Yes. And we struggled even, I think we had, which, we should have had at least six, we struggled to get four, and when we have four, we have actually four openings right now, because they've all termed out since, everybody's been there since the start of this commission back in 2009. They've gone through three consecutive upgrades. And the meetings are primarily just capital updates, updates that can be...
You provide anyway.
Provided with a memo. The only tangible item that we had over the last five years that we had a discussion about, which really revolved around discussions with the Health Department, was whether we remove fluoride from the system down, the water system in the Freedom area. But that was primarily presentations by the Health Department, and us, you know, looking at the committee as a recommendation from all of them, we still came to the board for a final decision.
Are there opportunities for any challenges or questions or whatever for folks that live in those specific areas to, to be able to come to you all? I know what you're going to say, but I want, I want you to hear, I want to hear you say it.
Right. The doors are always open. They, you know, we get calls, we get plenty of calls in utilities, day in and day out, but if they have a question about whether, you know, what involves the rates, and we'll be coming to all of you with a rate discussion here in the near, here in the near future of, you know, what makes up the rates. It's not just, we, you know, we're just trying to sit back and see if we can be the highest, you know, rate payers in, in the county, you know, in the county. So that's, you know, yes, we're, that is open for discussion at any time.
Okay. So are we good? We've had this discussion once when we were doing boards and commissions, and so we're bringing it out in the open now. Any, anything that, Dennis, you were getting ready to say something, I think?
No, you were good.
Everybody good?
It's been covered.
And I will add, just this past year, three of the meetings that we had scheduled did not even have a forum of the four that were to be joining.
Okay.
As the county changes, you know, we need to change whether, and some of the boards and commissions we have, you know, really don't fit the county where it is today from even five, 10 years ago, so we have to make changes with it.
Okay. All right, with that being said, Mr. Burke, do we, do we need a, a motion to make this official, or is this just a, okay, we're good?
Let's do a resolution terminating the, how were they created, Jeff?
This is the bylaws board. I'll share it up with you. It's at least one of them.
All right, well, you, you took an official action to create them, so you need an official action to...
Dissolve them.
...terminate them. So a resolution would be fine.
So would you draw that up, and then we do it now, or you want to do it now?
You could do it now if you want. You can...
Make a motion.
I need a motion or a resolution to dissolve the Utility Advisory Committee.
Okay. Are you making that motion, Tim?
Does he get to vote, too?
I don't know, huh?
I'll make a motion to, to dissolve the Utilities Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff on this one? And assuredly, we will be able to still provide the services we were.
Yes.
I want to make sure people know that.
Right.
And we're not getting rid of something that was critically important, although we value those that served on this, but we just were, we were challenged with finding topics for them to discuss as well, because, and maybe that's because we do have such a great open door policy, where folks can reach out at any time, so...
Yes, and with the town hall meetings that all the commissioners have on a regular basis, if any of those areas are impacted, you know, I'll have representatives from Utilities, I'll be there myself, we'll be happy to sit back and be with them during your town hall meetings. That's also a good time to sit back and...
Okay.
...discuss these concerns if they have, if any come up.
All right, I've got a motion and second. Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
The next one is the, which is also related to Jeff, is the Solid Waste Advisory Council. This was started about six, seven years ago by Commissioner Howard, former Commissioner Howard, as, as his own personal committee, and then somehow morphed into a County Commissioner Committee. I don't remember the specifics, but bylaws and all that. Prior to Commissioner Howard creating this committee on his own, this work had been done basically by the Environmental Advisory Council. And so the thought is that the Environmental Advisory Council could continue doing that work going forward. They're a very active, very well-oiled machine, and, and seems to make sense to pare it down again.
Okay. So with that said, I'm going to invite Brenda up, too, so that she is part of this conversation.
She looks lonely sitting back there. Come join the conversation.
Brenda does a tremendous job of, of helping the Environmental Advisory Council...
She does.
...wade through the weeds. See what I did there? See?
Wades through the wetlands, maybe?
Not just weeds, I think.
Just don't hit a bogey.
So your, your thoughts on this, and certainly this is going to be a little bit more of a challenge, because we're actually considering taking something away, but keeping the focus on that subject by increasing the amount of people on another board.
Right.
That's why this one's a little bit more...
Yes, a little, little complexity to this. One thing with the SWAC, you know, it's, in over the last five years, four to five years now, they were, they were brought on, especially after the, everything that kind of transpired with the waste of energy, and to come up with the new ways of what the county can do with their trash. Over the years, the SWAC is meeting after meeting, and for a while there, they, instead of quarterly, they met monthly for almost a year. There was productive times, there was times that there was a little more discussion amongst the group, but at the end, they presented many of items to the commissioners, the previous board of commissioners primarily. And they moved, you know, one of the positives out of it is discussion about the Pay As You Throw program, or the future program that we have in New Windsor, the pilot program that's going on right now, that was one of the, one of the points that came out from those discussions. They, we just tasked them to put together some of the legwork. After that, we had to take the entire program and meet with, you know, meet with vendors, et cetera, to come up, to come up with the details of the program, and they just had the idea of what about, and here's a list of eight things. Another one of the items that was discussed was a system benefit charge. There's always the discussion with the transfer of money from the general fund, which primarily goes to pay for the coupons, donated trash pickups for our fire companies, et cetera, during special events. Also goes toward our recycling. Some of that money also goes toward the foreclosed landfills that we've had in the county for multiple decades that we have to monitor for 30-plus years. No money ever came in for those. And also to boost up money for our, for Cell Four, that, when the time comes, for us to move the transfer station, move the scale house, move everything so we can open up and excavate Cell Four. That won't be cheap. But what we're looking at is, so those ideas, they came up, system benefit charge, we've talked about composting facilities here within the county. We're a rural county, we don't have the volume to maintain a composting company on a regular basis. We'd have to team with other surrounding counties. That's something the authority's working on with us. We also, another topic was to come up with a MRF, or basically recycling sorting system here in the county. I'll follow back again to the quantity. We don't have the quantity to maintain a facility of that sort, we'd have to team with surrounding counties. That task is moved on to the authority, the authority is looking at different options, working with Futter County, Howard County, Montgomery County of, could we be looking at something more in the central Maryland area? So a lot of the ideas that have come up and been discussed, you know, we've exhausted it at this point. We're looking at new technologies, I'm actually doing a tour in West Virginia of a new technology for trash, to see maybe if that's the next, next phase that we go to, it's treating our trash like compost, and dries it up, and puts it into a, to its lowest carbon-based form, and used as a fuel in lieu of using coal. And it burns cleaner, doesn't have the mercury, and it's the number one person on the list that uses that, that is on the list for that permitted, lehigh cement. So that's, you know, those are the things that we're looking at, is what's the next technology? We're hauling out what we're hauling out at this point to meet our contract needs. Commissioners in the future could decide, we're just going to landfill everything, in 20 years, we might be out of that, you know, use up that asset. So we've kind of got to the point where we need, there needs, we've suggested a break of a few years, but yet still have some representation with the Environmental Advisory Council, so we can have continued dialogue with, with portions of that group.
And now we hand the ball off to you, Brenda. So your thoughts, and I don't know that we've really talked about the number of folks that we would add, or what have you, I don't know that we discussed that, but maybe we'll, but your... But maybe, what, your, what are your thoughts?
We already have nine people, so if we get it too much bigger, you know, groups that large get more difficult to work with, but, I mean, I'll do whatever we have to do. And I guess there's, we had, we had one vacancy, but you've just invited somebody to fill that spot, so we will be full at nine if she accepts.
How many folks were on SWAC? Do we know?
We had about, we had about nine on that.
Really?
Eight, seven to nine, I don't remember exactly where we left off. We've had a few members I haven't seen at the meetings for now, for over a year and a half, two years, just commitments elsewhere.
We pulled in two, to make it from nine to 11, I mean.
How many are you on both committees?
We had two representatives of the Environmental Advisory Council that were also on the SWAC. However, one of them resigned from the EAC but was still on the SWAC, and I think she has since resigned that as well.
Yes, she just recently resigned.
So we have one member on the EAC right now that is also on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Okay, well, that, that's good to know. So if we put two more on, so we got three out of the, if that's the suggestion.
Yeah, I just, I mean, going from nine to 11, it's not that dramatic, but typically on these committees, you get two, three, that really are carrying most of the effort of the committee, and would want to still have the interest in serving. Something to look at, I mean, I agree, if you make it too big, it's unruly, but you're already at nine, getting to 11, I don't think it's that dramatic. I don't know.
What about the challenges that we're facing that don't seem to be going away in reference to recycling?
Yeah.
Matter of fact, I think it might be getting worse, the way it sounds.
Yeah, I mean, across the, I mean, across the United States right now, and across actually the world, it's impacting everybody, and it comes down to the cleanliness of our recycling. That's one of our biggest challenges. I even spoke of that last night in Carol 101. It's
I heard all about that, it was great.
Thank you. People, you know, people putting plastic, people putting plastic bags into their trash, people not cleaning out the bottles and cans.
Right.
That little bit of contamination wipes out an entire load.
Right.
So we're going through, and what we're doing, you know, we're working on this, and it was, I guess it was reassuring to me, as, as, there's already been direction to staff to go ahead and do some additional marketing plans, look at, you know, Twitter, Facebook, other mailings, kinda reminding everybody the do's and don'ts of recycling. We already have that in motion, and I received the American Public Works Association magazine, and the whole magazine is about trash and recycling this month. And I was reading one of the articles, and I'm like, we're doing it, we're doing it, we're doing it, yes, we agree, we're doing it, we're doing it. It's kind of rethinking exactly what we wanna do. And these are things where we're gonna have to be talking to the board about, is do we go back to dual stream in order to maybe clean up the recycling a little bit? In the next two years, they're building facilities throughout the United States.
Okay, so, without getting into that whole dialogue,
Right.
I guess my question was more focused on, could SWAC still be beneficial to us in working on that, which would alleviate some of the onus on the EAC? I don't know, I mean, it's, seems to be a challenge, and maybe that's
I would love to say there's some options out there, but everybody's hitting the same wall right now. There's many counties, municipalities that have stopped from taking recycling.
So you don't see really a point in having a committee work on something where there's really not something that
Right.
There's an option to work on.
We can start charging for recycling, we can start checking IDs of people that come in door, because right now we have people from Pennsylvania, Baltimore County, Frederick County, all coming to our landfill because it's a free-for-all.
But that's not what you're asking, you're asking if there's justification
With committee's assistance. If there's a justification to keep them, maybe just to work on that, because it's, it's, I'm only trying to look
The EAC can do that, I mean, they do a great job of anything environmental.
At this point, no.
Okay.
Just to clarify, there are only six members on this WAC.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's one that currently serves.
On both.
On both, so there's one.
And then five others.
And if we would take two others to make it 11.
Or do you recommend keeping it nine, and covering, what is your recommendation?
Well, I don't know if I was prepared to make a recommendation, but I did wanna point out that it would require a code amendment, because the nine members is actually in Chapter 31, so it's not just in the bylaws.
Okay.
And I think we could, as far as the number of people, we, we can do it with the 11, if that's what you wanna do, but I think we could also do it with the people we have, if you prefer to go that way.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna, we're talking about five people here, essentially, because one serves on both. And I just think if we're gonna do this, I think it would be in our best interest to add to, that's my opinion.
Or you could combine, let them term out.
Well, that's the other thing, I don't, I don't know that, I don't know where
All right, we lost a member, one of the members we're in touch with on a daily basis, because you see his blue trucks around the county all over the place.
Yeah, right.
You know, another member's been on a rare, you know, once a year, we kinda, we, hey, I remember you. So it's
I guess maybe a question I might have is, if there isn't anything for them to discuss currently regarding solid waste, then does it matter as much whether we add two more people?
Well, that's a good point, too. A valid question. Food for thought.
We could do away with, just with the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and then decide what we're gonna do with the environmental
Later on.
Right, it doesn't have to be done right now, besides what you already said, it has to be a change in our, our, whatever code to make it more or less
In order to change the number of members.
Right, so maybe we should, we can look at that, take one action today, and then look at this, this second action possibly later, because we have to make a change in the code anyway.
The bottom line is, there's no risk in dissolving the SWAC.
I don't think so. And I would like, to be honest with you, because I do know some of the people who are on the committees, I would like one or two of them to move over to the other one, because I think that would be helpful, I think to have a good knowledge of what's going on, especially in the county.
And, you know, openings always come along, and so when they do, we can certainly reach out to those folks.
It's rare that when I get the nine full, that it stays that way for very long.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, another option, and they can be each, an alternate member of the, maybe non-voting member, but they can attend the meetings, be part of, you know, participate, maybe not have a vote, if we feel that there's, if we feel over some time as an evaluation that they're bringing, there's more conversation happening at the table, or there's, you know, there's, there's a, there's a reason to increase it at that point, maybe that's another option to evaluate it, to see if there's actually that, to get that interest from the remaining couple of committee members.
By the way, I did get a nice letter the other day in the mail from, I guess it was from Recycler, or from County, I'm not sure where it came from. Remind you not to put plastic in recycling, if it was there, it wouldn't take it.
Plastic bags, yep.
Did you throw that letter away?
Recycled it.
I put it in a plastic bag, you put it in.
All right, what are the wishes here?
And you'd be charged for it, though.
There you go, perfect.
What are the wishes here? I mean, this is certainly not something we have to do today either, we could think about it based on the information that we've received from both of these folks, or we could just make the decision now and move forward with whatever, you guys, I don't, whatever.
I'd like to see them combined and just let them term out until we get down to the number.
Yeah, but we can't do that unless we make a change.
Three of their terms end in June.
Eleven, huh?
Three of the terms of the folks on this, you need to escape, three of the terms end in June, so
Are they first term or second term?
All second, nobody's, nobody's first.
Okay, well, then I think it's gonna take care of itself, and I think we can, all right.
Just let it run out.
What were you gonna say?
So I think, I mean, I still think if you want to
I was gonna say, if we're gonna do away the Solid Waste Advisory Commission or Council, whatever it's called, we could ask to see if they have an interest in moving over to the Environmental Advisory Council, maybe they wouldn't wanna do that anyway. So that might solve the question right there. Do you have an interest in moving over to the other one? If they don't, then, okay.
Which is the other thing, too, because, and you bring up a good, both of you bring up a good point, because maybe these folks aren't interested in, in, you know, looking at the other ideas that the, that the EAC has, maybe they're just focused on solid waste, which wouldn't be a good fit for you.
They're probably gonna put a subcommittee together.
Because if you're sitting there discussing, you know, the
Solar.
Yeah, solar, or whatever, you know, I don't know how much the interstate have in that, so, I don't know, I don't, out of respect, perhaps, maybe we should
We can do that.
We should let them know that this is the direction that we are thinking about, especially since three of the terms are expiring in June.
Right.
And then let them decide whether or not they think there would be any point in one or two, whatever.
So you wanna dissolve the Solid Waste Advisory Council, and then see their interest in, in moving to EAC?
Right. Or just let them know that that's what we're thinking. I think out of respect for the things that they've done over the last three or four years, we, we owe them the respect to say, hey, this is where we think we're gonna go, and instead of pulling that rug out, advise them of that, give them that respect.
Yeah.
And then let them know that that's the direction that we are trying to go in here.
Sure.
And then see what they say.
Commissioner, you occasionally say some brilliant things.
Wow. So do you wanna vote on, do you wanna vote on dissolving?
It's February, that's probably it for me.
It's March.
I think that was a fantastic idea.
See, see, it's already done, so.
He like stepped into that.
Just to keep things consistent, do you wanna vote on dissolving the SWAC, and then we'll, we'll do the letter
I would wait
No, the commissioner asked him to wait.
I would wait and give them the respect first.
Okay, that's fine.
No, I mean, we're not, I mean, you know, the earth's not gonna, all due respect to the EAC, the earth's not gonna stop
Stop revolving?
Right.
Your brilliance went fleeting.
Just that quick.
So then the next one is the Long Term Advisory Council, I know Commissioner Wance met with the new chair, and he had some suggestions.
Yeah, so I think we covered that as well, but we'll put it out here. The, the new chair is
Mark.
Mark Fisher.
Fisher.
And Mark, thank you guys very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mark, you don't wanna talk about LTAC, Jeff? What's, what are you doing? Why are you running, Jeff?
He's escaping.
Jeff, where are you going? Jeff, Jeff?
Jeff, go fill some potholes. All right, no problem. Thank you.
Mark is the new chair of that, and Katie Townsley is the new co-chair. And it was Mark's suggestion that instead of just dissolving that group, to allow the five appointees that we made from each of the districts, take a chance now to digest everything that happened, because I don't know that they had a whole lot of input or whatever when all of these things were happening. There are those that would disagree with that, don't be looking at me like that, stop looking at me. So, I thought it was a pretty good idea. The whole LTAC does not have to meet, and they certainly aren't gonna meet with the frequency that they were meeting before. I think it was suggested that perhaps maybe four meetings, and they would take whatever, give it the citizen look, and then come back with a final report, if you will. I suggested a year for that, and have that core group meet, it would be four of them, five of them, plus one, because Katie is the co-chair, so out of respect for her, she needs to be part of that as well. And let them digest these things and come back from a citizen standpoint of what they, what LTAC came up with. After a year, we'll make the decision then to do with whatever. The rest of the group, their activities, I would say, would be suspended.
Are we gonna give those five objectives and goals to achieve over the next year? Or is this just, I mean, what's the purpose besides just digesting or reading a plan? I mean, we need to give them some direction.
Well, I thought maybe they were kinda gonna give us what they thought. I kinda saw that the other way around, the way that Mark explained it to me, that they were gonna come back with us and
That's how this started, without
Well, I know that, I know. Valid point, Commissioner Rastine, I don't
Can we ask, in agreeance with what you're sharing, ask that Mark comes in, or the LTAC comes in, to us in, you know, June, in three months, and get a pulse check on where they're at, and then determine whether they should not, just kinda like the Veterans Advisory Council, giving them objectives and guidance.
I think that's a good idea, that'll be after budget, so we'll have
Exactly.
Give them vision.
Right. So should we give them like three months, to kinda gather their thoughts?
Good, good, good idea, and then get a, then perhaps insert some of what we'd like to see them do for the rest of the year.
Exactly.
And then, you know, go. But again, this would just be those five, plus one, and everybody else is suspended.
Okay.
That's what you guys want.
Is that okay? We need to do anything?
I'll second that.
There you go.
So, let's be clear on our language, though. A motion to suspend all of the LTAC, with the exception of the five citizen appointees, plus the co-chair, for a future report back to us sometime mid-year.
Why don't we say, motion to suspend the activities of LTAC, as opposed to, sounds like they're suspending people.
Yeah, okay, suspending the activities of LTAC, with the exception of the five citizen appointees and the co-chair. And they'll come back with, to us sometime mid-year for further direction. That's the motion.
That's fine.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And last but not least, you wanted to know about the Historic Preservation Commission, I think that's its full name. Tim can, can chime in here. It's associated specifically with the historic overlay that is part of Union Town. So do you wanna fill them in on what its goal and responsibility is?
Yeah, you, you don't have to have a historic commission or historic overlay, but the commissioners way back in the 80s decided to do that. They adopted an overlay for Union Town Road, and adopted a historic preservation ordinance, which applies only to those properties in the overlay, which of course is limited to Union Town Road. So if you wish to do any, any work on the exterior of your property, and you live in the Union Town Road area, which is covered by the overlay, you're governed by the historic preservation guidelines, pardon me, the historic preservation ordinance, which includes, I won't call them guidelines, I'll call them requirements, as to what you can and can't do with the exterior of your property. So right now, it's strictly limited to Union Town Road, and the commission sits, and they sit as adjudicatory body for questions that come up with regard to construction on any buildings at Union Town Road, along the, the exterior of those, of those buildings. So lately, there hasn't been much of that. I mean, back in the 90s, there was a lot of it, now there just seems to not have been a lot of work going on on any of the buildings out there.
I do know, I do know the, the bank there in Union Town was recently renovated, and they did
Changed to a bank?
No, no, that was, that was the new bank. I'm talking about the old bank.
Didn't there a house there?
Yeah.
They sold it as a residence.
Yeah, but I think they kept the facade and everything associated with the historic work of the old bank.
And that was largely the work of the Historic Preservation Commission, because originally the building was to be demolished, and they said, can't you do something with the, the front of it, you know, to keep it that way? And after various planning and things like that, they came up with a plan to keep the facade and use it as, I think it's living space for somebody, or, I might be wrong. They reused the building, in other words. They kept the front facade.
They kept the vault, too, didn't they?
Yes, the vault.
I wouldn't want to sleep in the vault.
So the, so we're bringing this up to whether to dissolve this historic
No, 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 you couldn't. Well, as long as you have the historic overlay, you have to have the historic commission. But there was, Commissioner Wance's question was, could they do more, since they're not
Right, it was my intent, it was my intent to perhaps look at a way in which they could be expanded a little bit, not in numbers, but in responsibility
Go to the county.
In order to take care of some things in the county, because I know that there, there are things that have come up recently, I know there's an issue with one of the cemeteries, you know, if we had somebody that was strong enough to, a commission to, to help with that, or research, or whatever, that would be great. We've got, you know, certainly the Warfield We've got, you know, certainly the Warfield issue down there with the buildings, and, and, you know, maybe they could be part of looking at that. Not, not that they would take us in a direction we shouldn't go to, but we've got a lot of historical buildings in the county, I know we had a lawsuit that was, was against some folks at the Bark Hill, on one of the, on the church up there, and perhaps they could have used a little bit of expertise from a group like this to help them, but it was outside of the town limits of Union Town.
Their regulatory authority is limited to Union Town, that doesn't mean they can't provide resources, act as a resource for anybody.
As far as advisory, that's fine, regulatory, I don't like.
Yeah, this was...
Because, so, because it sounds like this is the Maryland Historic Registry on top of, or this on top of that, and it's like, enough, you know?
Right.
We, we have enough challenges getting things renovated, because we have registries already out there, and, and that's a huge concern. So using them as advisory, I'm all for it, you know, expertise, no problem, but anybody that's trying to be regulatory, and you cannot do because of a facade, I'm like, do we really want to go there?
Well, you've already gone there, actually, it's, it's an ordinance, so you'd have to, you'd have to actually repeal it.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm prepared to repeal that ordinance for that one specific area...
Aye.
Right now, maybe we have that conversation, but it sounds like to expand their services or their expertise, I'm all for, as long as we do not try to expand their regulatory, you know, guidelines, or whatever.
That ordinance, you have to live in Union Town, don't you?
It, it only governs that, that portion of Union Town Road.
You have to be a resident there, too, right?
To be on the commission? No, it's a little bit more flexible than that, but not a lot.
That's good, that opens it up then for countywide.
Somewhat, there, there's some rules, and I don't remember them all, I think there's some people who have, I think there's some people who have to be. And the only other concern I'd have with regard to your suggestion is, they're not necessarily experts in historic preservation, or, so I don't know how much value they'd be able to add to those situations that you're suggesting.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know either, I just, I just think that there are times that there's no one to turn to when there is a historical question, or challenge with a building, or a cemetery, or whatever, and I would only look to them as a group that could perhaps take it a step further, away from county staff, to do some research for us, and bring back an advisory report, that's all.
We can certainly ask if they'd be interested.
Well, I like that idea.
Yeah.
But I think the makeup of the group might be different than what it is right now, because my understanding, they're not experts that are appointed to the group, they're people that are interested in it, so if we're gonna have someone that's gonna advise you on, on a house or a building, stuff like that, from a historic perspective, they should have a really good background in that, and not just be someone that wants to serve in the commission, although I do appreciate stuff like that.
Right.
But if you don't have the background, you can't advise other people, you really can't.
Yeah, I agree with that, maybe we could hone down the, the qualifications to serve on that group, as a result of that, too, and maybe we'd have some, some buy-in from maybe the historical society, maybe they put somebody on there that could assist us, I don't know, because they, they're a wealth of, well, they've got some people over there that have some knowledge, so, so, is that clear as mud? Tim?
Yes, the Historic Preservation Commission stays as it is, the overlay stays as it is, we invite them to participate in any other activities that we, we ask them to, as far as historical, historical, other buildings, but they would have no regulatory authority, just advisory only.
Yeah, and in addition to that, perhaps look at, you know, adding, or re, relook, giving it another look as to who's on there, and maybe putting some folks on there that that would, would be...
I think there's openings.
Yeah, and I think there's openings.
There are, and there's criteria in the ordinance, like one would have to have an architect, and things like that, you just don't get the, the people on there.
Right.
It's just not the interest.
Yeah, the Union Town is so small, and, you know, there just doesn't...
A licensed architect?
Oh, yeah, but if we expand it to look at the entire county, that they can be an advisory organization, you may get more interest from others coming into this.
Yep.
So, but, yeah, as long as it's advisory, not regulatory, I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay. Good?
That was it?
That was it, all right.
Okay, anything else?
Motion.
Got a second? Happy St. Patrick's Day, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.